At a quick notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the Bolton Board showing the time and place of the meeting. Will everyone please rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Item one, resolution twenty twenty-one eighty-seven certifying the governing body has reviewed the two thousand nineteen audit.
President of Township Lacey County, motion state New Jersey certifying to the local finance board that the members of the governing body have received the annual municipal audit for the year two thousand and nineteen. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennesys?
Yes.
As you will note that there is no comments or recommendations in the audit.
Resolution twenty twenty-one eighty-eight authorizing an emergency appropriation for a drainage repair.
Resolution Township Lacey County, motion state New Jersey authorize an emergency appropriation of forty-one thousand dollars for the reconstruction of the roadway drainage on Montauk and Sarasota Drive. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennesys?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty-one eighty-nine authorizing an emergency contract to repair a drainage issue.
Resolution Township Lacey County, motion state New Jersey authorize an emergency contract with Shore Connection for the reconstruction of a portion of Montauk and Sarasota Drive to correct this sinkhole caused by the collapsing of the drainage pipe. And this was the lowest bidder with regards to this. This was an emergency. This was not foreseen at the time that we developed the budget. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennesys?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty-one ninety authorizing the cancellation of taxes due to a disabled veteran exemption.
Resolution Township Lacey County, motion state New Jersey authorize the tax collector to cancel twenty twenty taxes due on a property granted the one hundred percent disabled veteran exemption and refund the resulting credit balance. This is on block eight thirteen lot seven point zero one.
Move it.
Can I second?
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennesys?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty-one ninety-one authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution Township Lacey County, motion state New Jersey authorize the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennesys?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty-one ninety-two authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township Lacey County, motion state New Jersey authorize the payment of township bills in the amount of five million, seven hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and seven cents. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennesys?
Yes. Motion to approve township meeting minutes of June eleven.
Month of reports.
No, we didn't. All right, monthly reports.
Municipal clerk's office for the month of June collected receipts the amount of three thousand, thirty dollars and fifty-five cents. Municipal court for the month of May collected four thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. Public Works Department road opening permits for the month of May were collected in the amount of four thousand, seventy-two dollars. Recycling commodity the amount of seven thousand four, I mean, seven hundred and forty-six dollars. Truck parking in the amount of two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. And municipal docs for the month of May, sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And municipal docs for the month of June, one thousand, one hundred dollars. And community development for the month of June collected receipts the amount of eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and ten cents. Motion to accept the reports as read?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve township meeting, township meeting minutes of June eleven twenty twenty?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of June eleven twenty twenty?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve membership in the Lenoka Harbor Fire Company for Philip Corolo?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve, motion to approve raffle license applications for the Lenoka Harbor Fire Company and a women's club of Mirage, Barnegat.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have some add-ons, so. Okay, first is a resolution one ninety-four. It's a resolution Township Lacey County, motion state New Jersey authorizing the employment of seasonal employees for the recreation department. We need to add two more individuals, Grace Giordano and Dylan Maggin for recreation. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
And Mayor Kennesys?
Yes.
Next is resolution one ninety-five. It's a resolution Township Lacey County, motion state New Jersey rejecting all bids received for a contract to a third-party power supplier to provide, to provide electric generation service to Lacey Community Energy Aggregation Program participants and to provide government energy aggregation services in connection with the local, the Lacey Community Energy Aggregation Program. We went out to bid today with regards to our community aggregation that we've been doing for the past six years. And unfortunately, the bid results came back very, very poor. So we will, as of September, be all going back to JCP and L. So can I have a motion to reject those bids?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
And Mayor Kennesys?
Yes.
That's all I have to add on.
Deputy Mayor, come in for the committee. Deputy Mayor Curatolo.
Yes. Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to pass on some information. I had spoken recently to our chief of police, Chief Tabella. He is, he was wanting me to say tonight we're stepping up enforcement efforts on Lacey Road, County Road six fourteen, near the Dunkin' Donuts. There are people making lefts into there as well as wah-wah before that. There are people making lefts out of there. It's causing increasing traffic hazards. And he wanted the word out that they're going to step up some enforcement efforts over there for the safety of the public. Last couple of meetings, people have, you know, they've heard me really rail a little bit about the governor and these closures. And I thought we were coming towards the end of it. And I thought that the governor was going to allow indoor dining. He said that he would. Restaurants went out, hired people, purchased food, some even deconstructed some of their outdoor seating. Then he said he wouldn't. And so we had a lot of food product go bad, more and more people out of work. I think it's extremely unfortunate. I'm not going to get into name-calling. I'm not going to delve into the politics of self-destruction. I'll let people judge for themselves. But I think what took place there, as I talked to some restaurateurs in our town and out of it, was disgraceful to hurt people that are already down. And now there's discussions around the state to not open up schools. I'll tell you what kills people. You know, COVID is bad, okay? I still state in my thesis, which is not a thesis or theory, it's the truth. We got about one point five to two percent of the people infected with COVID. But you know who kills people? Poverty kills people. So we have people out of work. We have people not going to the doctor because they're afraid. Some people not have benefits anymore because they can't afford Cobra. Some people not getting cancer treatments that they need. Some people in, kids in houses with abusers, in some spots, there's kids on free and reduced lunch. The only good meal they get is in schools. So I think there's enough brain power in this room and in every school district to open a school and do it safely. I think you can employ social distancing. You see everybody, most of the people where you walk now wearing masks. The reason mine is off is because I have the floor at this moment. But I'm hoping that schools open. I'm hoping that the governor relents. I'm hoping that our businesses come back. And if, and I tell you damn it, if there was something that we could do, this is the most frustrated I've been since I've been up here in seven years. If there was something we could do, I would do it. Whether that is legal action that some municipalities are discussing against the governor, we'll take the advice and consult with my colleagues and our township attorney with that. But it's most unfortunate, and I don't want to be long-winded, but I can't say it enough, Mayor, I'm very disappointed in some of the actions here and how hurtful it's been to our people, everybody in every community in Lacey Township. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee member Juliana?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as Peter was saying, I'm sure a lot of businesses are really hurting right now. Speaking to a lot of them, they're, you know, I think they're near the end of their ropes where they're, they're taking their personal now and putting it up. And I was always against that because, you know, what you, home you live in, but for somebody to now take their home and put it up as collateral to keep their business rolling, wow, that is really hardcore. So I hope that the governor starts using his head and start opening up and let us do what we gotta do. I think, and hope that he, I hate to say this, but let's hope he maybe thought he trained us. I don't know. Or whatever fashion he thought he might have done, but maybe we learn from it and let us go ahead and do it. I think we're pretty smart people, so I think we'll be able to handle out there and social distance and do whatever we have to do. Lacey Township Public Works, great job of, I mean, I've been around to all the parks. The kids are having a blast. We're doing a great job of keeping them sanitized, clean. People are talking about it. So I commend, please bring that back to the Public Works, Mr. Flynn. I commend them on the great job they're doing. The Police Department, I know what they're going through. They're keeping us safe. They're, every day it's something new. I know that, you know. I talk to different people and the chief too, and I commend you guys. You know, you're putting that, you're on the front line along with everybody else that works in this town. So I want to thank all of yous because you do keep Lacey safe and what it is today. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Nick, Committee member McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll pick up where Ben and Juliana left off. In those bills that we paid with a little over five million dollars, I think it was a total number, was a bill in there for a hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred dollars for Los Angeles. And they've earned it. They've absolutely earned it this year. There's no question about that. I want to thank them all for the work on the front lines. It's not easy. And supposedly there's another wave of this stuff coming in the fall, but we'll see. I hope to God it doesn't happen. Nick, I want to congratulate you on your win, the primary. Ran out of posts, it was a good victory, but, you know, even, even with that, and we didn't do any campaigning, we still got almost two thousand votes that I saw. I haven't checked it, the update, but I'm sure it was higher than that.
After the fourteenth, you'll probably see additional numbers because all of those ballots still had time to come in.
Right. I think I went in the next morning and I saw it was like nineteen hundred.
And the provision will still have to be.
Right, so congratulations on that. I do want to apologize to the township people for wait our governor's stop the voting because that was an atrocity. It's not how we should do it in this country. We've gone through world wars and still voted in booths and so forth like that. And, you know, you can go into Walmart with two hundred people. You're trying to tell me you can't go into a booth and push a button. All they gotta do is give you a little stylist that you can take home and says, "I voted." You hit the button, you hit the buttons, hit the thing.
They gave us Q-tips.
They gave us Q-tips. Beautiful. Beautiful. And according to, I'm not going to use the name of the governor, that's the way he wants to do it in the fall, in the presidential election. Are you kidding me? We won't load the votes for three weeks. It'll be hell to pay in this. So, real quick, the whipet is open. I want to, I want to thank Recreation, particularly Jim Wyland, because as he was opening it up, we had a problem with a valve that wouldn't seal properly, which was, it's the steps that go into it. And through his ingenuity and talking to the manufacturer, they were able to come up with a stop-gap measure that kept, got us through the Fourth of July weekend and so forth. And I stopped in there last Tuesday and we did sixty-eight kids. Now, what we've done with the whipet this year is we've limited it to thirty kids, which is half the capacity. And they go every, and they'll go for thirty minutes because then they're thirty minutes off, but they do whatever they gotta do to the whipet to make it right for the next, next group. So that's, that's good. The parks are great. The parks are great. The Public Works guys, unbelievable job. I was just, been talking to Veronica before the meeting, and I was questioning her about you guys, Public Works guys working out there just in this heat. The parks are great. I jogged daily three times a week and it's just, it's just amazing how great it looks. Sorry to see that we're all going back to JCP and L. That's a raise and that's not something I'm really looking forward to. Mayor? That's it. That's all I got.
Thank you, Tim. As we slowly return to normal, I'm still holding conference calls with the governor's office every other week. I'm on call with the mayors of Cape May, Ocean, and Atlantic County, and I continue to advocate for Lacey Township and South Jersey in general. I've also, over the past couple of weeks, have received a couple of emails from people advocating for police reform, and I personally reviewed the guidelines as it pertains to the use of force in the township. And I think guidelines are well-written and easy to understand. I believe our officers are trained well and largely have a good moral compass. We've had very few cases, for as long as I've been on the committee, for charges against officers regarding police misconduct. And I think zero, as a matter of fact, I'd guess. So we don't seem to have those, the issues that other parts of the country have as it pertains to our police. I think they're, you know, well-managed and well-taught. I want to acknowledge the school board and the administration for all the hard work they've done the past, first, certainly the past couple of months, but in particular, just trying to get some sort of a graduation, you know, get, get the kids that are graduating to have some sort of a normal ceremony for graduation. That's supposed to be tomorrow, but that looks like it's going to be rained out. Looks like it's going to be Saturday now, but they did a lot of hard work and they have an extensive amount of guidelines for social distancing. They're going to have two graduations to divide the class in half. So I just want to just thank them for all the hard work they've done in that regard. And those are my comments, and I will, you have an add-on?
Pardon me, I have an amendment on my vote for the bills that I had to abstain on D zero four zero zero.
Correct.
So.
Can't hear you through your mask.
All right. I should have abstained on D zero four zero zero.
Gotcha.
With that, we'll open up for the public. Does the public have any questions?
Scene done, make a motion.
We have a question. Getting all worked up here.
Statement address.
Kevin Flynn, Davis, Hampton, Fort River. Last meeting, you guys settled a grievance with the PVA. When was that grievance filed?
April twenty-sixth of nineteen.
And when the grievance was filed, who denied? Who denied?
I denied initially.
And you had no backing from the township committee on that? You took it upon yourself?
Well, there's a process through the grievance, as you know, you're in a union, there's a process. It goes at different levels. So once I deny it at my level, they have the right to go to their level or to arbitration with it. So, and you're.
Did it, okay, and did it go to arbitration?
Well, no, we didn't have to go to arbitration because we worked out an agreement.
With labor attorney? Were your labor attorney present?
And, yeah, all attorneys were present. The PVA's attorney, our attorney, consulted with the governing body as we went through and came to an agreement.
How much did it cost?
Off the top of my head, I have no idea.
I didn't expect you to. I will be back the next meeting.
You can operate if you'd like to.
Well, I'm old-school Veronica.
You can operate if you'd like to. You can operate if you'd like to. I'm not going to do the research in the meantime. You can operate if you'd like to. There is a mechanism.
You got two weeks to get it back to me.
And I have two weeks to do a lot of work too, so you can.
So either I operate, you're still going to have to do the research, or you could just.
No, because then I can give it off to somebody else. So, opera.
I'll go find my buddy Gab and then we'll get it.
That's fine.
Along with how much we've spent in the labor attorney for the past year and a half trying to negotiate contracts. Because, how long have you been up there on the, as administrator?
Two thousand and nine.
And how many times in those years have we gone from, and used the labor attorney through the entire process of negotiating contracts?
Well, contracts are up every three years on a staggered basis. We've used them several times. I can't.
Not, not every year though, correct? Not all, not every contract?
Probably not on every contract, correct.
Well.
The, the reason, not the only reason, but the consensus to use a labor attorney now is because those contracts are becoming very unwieldy on the language side of it, that none of us can understand what's going on.
Gary used to be able to understand him. He'd sit down and he'd work out.
There's two, there's two aspects of the contract. I think most of us understand the financial side of it very well, but then there's the language side that actually costs into the financial side that become difficult to manage.
From what I understand, the unions really aren't asking for a whole lot of anything being changed but some basic stuff. I don't understand why you guys, someone up there can't sit down with them and get it straightened out. Instead, we keep paying the labor attorney for simple stuff that all the unions are asking for, very simple.
Well, I, it's, I'm not going to negotiate it in public, but there's things that he brings back to, you know, we sit down with him, we go.
Well, of course he's going to bring back stuff because that's more valuable hours he gets to, to, you know.
It would be nice if things were that simple, but sometimes they aren't.
We're not, I know they're not looking at rewrite the world, and your boy is, and all we want is simple stuff. So you just keep paying them and keep paying them and keep paying them.
I understand. I appreciate the comments.
Yep. Oh, and I'm not.
All right, good.
Next question, or next thing. You had to do an emergency for that drainage job.
Yep.
You know why? The infrastructure in this town's crumbling. Because you people don't want to pave roads, you don't want it, you just want.
That's one of the, that, you've got a misconception there. I tell you, Stephen would love to pave roads.
Well, why aren't we?
We're limited, well, when you guys are asking for a million-dollar fire truck, sometimes we go and buy it. I have a million dollars.
We have very, very.
You quote yourself Veronica, it's not a million dollars.
We have a very limited.
Well, I think you have in the past.
We have.
Nope, never spend a million dollars on a fire truck.
We have a, our choices are two. We have, we either pull it from, make taxpayers pay more, or we pull it from a different department. That's, that's, that's the nuts and bolts of our budget.
But here you are, talking about spending thirty-five million dollars on any Taj Mahal to be built over behind.
That's not true.
Well, how much is it?
Because that's how, that's, that's completely, that's completely incorrect.
We don't even have a number yet.
It's not, that's, that's.
That's the number I was heard was being.
That is long-term.
It's going to be more, twenty, thirty, at least twenty million.
I have no idea because it said, it's, you put these, you have to put, if you, in real estate development, you have to put the wheels in motion way before you get to the point where you're ready to do something like that. It may never happen.
So, there's already been done on construction or basic engineering plans, something, nothing started.
A plot plan. It costs maybe a thousand dollars.
I think we spent twenty-five dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars or something we spent on.
But if it costs thirty-five million dollars, you know it's going to cost more than.
I don't know, we're not even going to talk about, I may not even be here wondering what we're talking about.
Really?
I mean, what are we, you're talking, when you, you may not even, what do you, this is a, Barnegat's been trying to build a new, they need one. They've been trying to do it for like fifteen years now.
Yeah, and theirs was plenty million dollars.
They didn't even build it yet.
But they got, it cost us, I mean, twenty million dollars.
I don't, I, it's, yeah, it's going to cost a lot of money if it ever happens. It's very, real estate development is very expensive. That's infrastructure. Yes.
Yeah, but the roads and the drainage system in this town is crumbling.
My, my goals here is, has been the same as always, is to keep taxes stable and to raise property values. That's it. That's all I'm doing up here. And so I believe it's accomplished by getting rid of this bill. This building doesn't belong here. The Fort River Fire Company, or Fort River Elementary School doesn't, anything that's ratable does not belong, have a public building on it. Police station doesn't belong there. This building is.
All right, so then, you know, well, what's an old landfill worth, Steve? You're in the real estate business. What's an old?
I have, it's, I have no idea. It could be worth, if there's any kinds of numbers.
Well, you know, from municipal lane to the edge of the police station property, Lacey Road to the gas pumps, surrounded by garbage.
We're built, it's built. And what is your point?
What happened in Mount Alb when they had to redevelop down there. They had to dig it all up.
That's.
What's it worth?
I said, that's, that's.
This piece is also a lot smaller and they're not going to get the revenue.
This is years in the making. It's not even worth discussing right now.
Well, if you guys are all thinking about the future.
I am. No, no, I'll, I speak, I am.
Well, then here's another thing, because you knew this about six years ago with the, the radio system that the fire department EMS is on. And here it is. We waited, you could have been buying radios every couple of years. You could have bought radios, could have bought radios, could have bought radios, because you knew we had a, there was a date. Now you waited till the last minute and you're scrambling and cutting money and, oh, it's too, too much money. We could have been on that system right now if you guys would have planned for the future then.
We always plan.
Then how come you could have been buying radios every year? You could have.
You're talking out of both sides of your mouth. You're sitting there saying, we're not planning ahead, but yet that's not, that, that doesn't count to build a new municipal building. So we're, it's okay, it's okay to plan ahead for radios and police, and fire equipment, but it's not okay to plan for.
That's pennies, pennies.
It's not pennies. The radios, we're spending, we're spending, we're spending a million, a million and a half, a million, three dollars on radios. Why, everybody has a cell phone. Why are we not using cell phones? A million, do you think I want to spend one and a half million dollars on radios? Absolutely not. That is the complete waste of money. We have to do it, I understand, but that is a complete waste of money. A million and a half dollars on radios, that'll be obsolete in probably another five years.
Time out. Because it's not just, it's not just for the fire department.
I know what it's for. It's for all EMS.
For the police stations in there.
Yes, I understand. And we, we upgraded that this year.
That's included in this.
No, that's not. That's not included. No, that's separate. We have, we earmarked nine hundred thousand for radios, period. The Spillman system was another four hundred thousand. So that's one point three million on, on technology upgrades. How much, I, how much would you like us to keep asking taxpayers for?
You gotta keep buying new computers for the buildings and.
How much, how much, do you want to, do you want to?
Keep up with the time, Steve.
Are you advocating to keep asking the taxpayers for more?
Public safety is number one priority in anybody's.
Do you feel unsafe in Lacey Township?
Well, honestly, you want to go there with that because now you've got fire departments that didn't get enough money to buy turnout gear for the firefighters. So, yeah, there's some guys at the firehouse that don't have the proper PPE because you guys didn't think their lives were worth spending five thousand dollars for a set of turnout gear.
We budget the best we can. Everybody gets something.
It's personal protection gear, Steve.
We did, we said, we, how much?
Fifteen dollars per squad.
And that, and that doesn't equip all the men that need it replaced.
We do the best we can with our budget.
Bring them guys up here and ask them, you explain that to them and their wives and families, how you feel that they're.
Everybody goes to work.
Someone's coming here to volunteer time. You're bragging about what a great job the volunteers do, and yet you don't want to give them the proper turnout gear.
Everybody gets up in the morning, they're guaranteed nothing. I go to work, I could be on a roof and fall off the roof, fall off the roof and kill myself, and nobody's crying for me. If you don't want to volunteer, if you feel your life is in danger volunteering for the Fort River Fire Company, I suggest you don't volunteer for the Fort River Fire Company.
Kevin, let me, let me jump in here. You brought up a couple of things. This mayor's done, this committee, former mayor McDonald, Veronica, not me, they've, they've done great work. I mean, you talk about road costs. I've been up here seven years. There's rarely been a year when we haven't had a grant. Lacey Road, East Lacey Road, Bayberry Village.
You're banking on the Lenoka Harbor Fire Department for getting grants.
We've, we've done well with procuring grants for road, road projects here. Even the dam, like I said, East Lacey Road, Bayberry Village, we've done well with grants so far with, with road projects.
Getting everything done it needs to be done.
Okay, so we do, we make projects from year to year. We plan the best way we can, and we prioritize need. When an emergency happens, like we voted on tonight, that happens. Let's talk about an attorney. An attorney indemnifies the town. An attorney is there to advocate for taxpayers and employees. Those contracts are nuanced unless you're an insurance specialist. In the old days, maybe it was. You could sit down and hash it out. The old days, probably, probably you could have done that. And in the old days, we were pretty fat on, on some of the largess from the tax receipts of the plant. A lot of that's in question now. COVID caused question marks for our quarters coming up. So an attorney is there, you may not believe this, but an attorney is there for employees. Attorney is there for us. I don't want to sit up here without our attorney because I'm not an attorney. Okay, so, so there's, there's safety, these are necessities in town now. And if, if things fail, our policy is not to negotiate on TV. We can't, that's not fair to any, any union at all.
Negotiate, I'm just saying you.
But these are, you're bringing up some things and you're, you're. Well, you're unloading on the mayor. You're bringing up some things, and I'm going to talk to his, I'm going to talk to his defense. I'm going to talk to my colleagues.
You're not the first mayor I've.
I know you did. You did, you did me too. You did me really well too.
Gary, everybody else is.
But, but, but.
You give it to me too.
Bring it, bring it all though, because I. We've done as, as well as we can. I think this year's twenty-seven bucks on the municipal side for a house averaging two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. We do get grants. Veronica, help me out, jump in. How many grants have we gotten? Bulkheads, South Dock. I mean, it's been, it's been a lot.
But you know, it's not enough. You're falling behind in maintenance that erodes in drainage systems in this town.
Some of it's starting to fail in those older sections of town.
Older sections. It's not getting fifty years old, most of the development.
You're exactly right.
Fifty years old, yeah.
You're exactly right.
Yeah, it's, I bet it's insanely expensive. Look at, down Lake Beach Bowl, what, do you want to raise roads? That's what the state wants.
Why is that?
State wants us to raise the roads.
Well, they're, they're out of rock, and you know.
We're having a tough time fighting that off.
And good luck when that big pipe that goes through Cranberry Hill falls apart because that's been in there for over fifty years.
I don't, well.
Yeah, good luck with that one.
I take it very, you know, again, it's what I do for a living, so I'm particularly attuned to the infrastructure.
You build them or we fix them, Steve.
Ours hold up reasonably well.
Yeah, but this is all back when they were using corrugated steel pipe. It's all failing now.
Yeah, that stuff is. Yeah, that stuff is. Um, I said, well, your point is, you know, we, I said, we appreciate the comments, and, um, we do try our best to manage the budget as best we can. It's difficult.
Well, just to let yous all know, put my application and join the club. Be hanging out with you guys, uh, every second Tuesday of the month, starting my political career, because someday I'm going to sit up there and straighten everything.
But you can retire in two years, then, correct?
You stick around, I'll be your boss by then.
I don't reason to be a boss, Kevin.
Thank you for your comments. Any, anybody else?
I think he stole the show, right, guys?
Seen done, make motion closing for.
Move it.
He did move it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I do the resolution for executive session?
Yes.
Okay, it's Resolution for Executive Sessions, uh, Resolution 193. Resolution Township Lacy County, motion State of New Jersey, authorizing the convening of the executive session to discuss matters of personnel and contractual matters. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennis?
Yes.
Motion, he will not be coming out for any other further decisions this evening. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hit the mic.